Good evening. It says Tuesday on my thing, but it's not. It's Monday, right?
Yeah, it is Monday.
It's Monday, March 20th. And we are in the Nashua North Boardroom. It is 6:03 PM and I am calling this meeting of the Policy Committee to order. I'm here. Ms. Darling is not with us this evening. Ms. Lampier?
Here.
Here. Mr. Crappie is not with us this evening. And Ms. Johnson has joined us. Welcome.
Yes, thank you.
We have Mr. Poska. We have Mr. Castellano. And I think Ms. Jengres is going to be joining us, but doesn't want to sit up here in the U with us.
And I just, I don't think I'm fully reading that.
It's entirely your comfort. Okay, great. So before we get started, well, I guess we'll just jump right in. So I have Policy ACE as the first item on here. And I was late to the last policy meeting, so I missed why we had tabled it. So we threw it on here, but I don't know the background. So Ms. Lampier, you were here, or Mr. Poska?
I think we'll start. I think one of the, as we got into ACE, when we went to the, referred it to the NHSBA that kind of had a small blurb, but that they recommended they had put in there. And I think there was a recommendation from the board, that this, from this committee, that was so wordy. And one of the statements was it's really referring to the procedural handbook that we have. It's what the gist of the policy is. Do we really need to try to restate everything here? So I think it was asked by Ms., I think Ms. Lampier made the recommendation. Can we just keep it very simple here, as we've had in the past, and then refer this back to the committee for another read of it?
Yeah, I was rereading it last night, and I saw that the policy that we have now goes right into the instructions for impartial due process hearing, which it really isn't the right place for that. But at the same time, it was so plain and so like just out there. And, you know, I would like to see parents to have the option to be able to easily understand what their rights are. And it's kind of, it's kind of a double edged sword. Like, I know that's not the right place for it, but it's also, I hate to see it taken away. And just refer them to the New Hampshire procedural safeguards, because they are so confusing. And they don't really, they're not really clear about what parents' rights are. It's like legalese, like what we were talking about the last time. So, I mean, I don't know if there's a way to change this policy, but then also make sure that the school has, or the district has some kind of plain text reading for parents who might not be able to sit down and read 38 pages, and not be able to like parse the sentences. Because I tried today to read through it. And the part, especially when it gets to alternative dispute resolutions, is it's really unclear. So I don't know what you might have thoughts on that.
My thoughts are that I don't have the expertise and understanding to be able to translate all of that legalese into something, like I don't have a good enough understanding that I could then explain it to someone else. So I am all for putting it in plain English. I just don't know how to get it there, because what we had from the School Boards Association, it sounds like it's still not plain English enough for what we're hoping for.
Yeah.
So, Ms. Johnson, looks like she has thoughts.
Thank you. This is one of the reasons I came tonight, because when I read this over the weekend, this little paragraph says nothing, absolutely nothing. So for a parent, I said, where's the written law in the policy? That was my question. This says nothing. Anyone outside of the school district, anybody, a parent, is going to say, what is our procedure? What is our procedure for conducting an impartial due process hearing? And I would venture to say, if you, any advocate that saw this would just say that this is, parents have no idea what their rights are. So you could have this small blurb, but then maybe you can have ACE dash R and have the regulations there if you feel it doesn't belong right on this page. Somewhere it has to state, because to go into the procedural safeguard handbook, where are they going to get it? It doesn't even say here. Where are you going to get the handbook? Where are you going to be able to research this information? And then it's going to come back and it's going to say, the district is hiding and it's not being transparent enough on what the parents' rights are. So somewhere, this information, that was too much, cumbersome on the page, really needs to go back.
Mm-hmm.
And even if you just want to have that small paragraph and say C-A dash R, or what A, and it lists everything there, and this way the parents have that information for them. Thank you.
Yeah, I tend to agree with you guys. We need something in the middle of the two. I did some Googling of other districts' policies, and a lot of places I'm pulling up just have that one paragraph, or two paragraphs, and the first paragraph says, we're not going to discriminate. Which, I agree, when I read it, I was like, this does, if I were a parent with a child who needed some sort of assistive device or something else, this policy doesn't help me figure out what I'm supposed to do to make sure that happens. So, the old one kind of did, though.
The problem with that is that it, what it has down there is the impartial due process hearing, but that's not what you start with. You would start with alternative dispute resolutions. And I was looking at the procedural safeguards today, and it has this paragraph about how parents in school districts should resolve disagreements in the least adversarial manner possible. When you have a concern or disagreement with the school district, the attempts to resolve these should start at the lowest administrative level possible. When those attempts are not possible, they're successful, formal alternative dispute resolution methods such as mediation or neutral conference may be a viable option. But it doesn't tell the parents what those alternative dispute resolutions are, what the lowest administrative level is, how the school would, what the steps are that the school would take to see if the parents were happy with what was going on.
Right. Mr. Poska, is, would it be possible to have, I don't know, Mr. Choba, or Mr. Alexander, or and yourself, or yourself, sit down? I don't want to put this on Ms. Lampier's lap, but I think Ms. Lampier has the most experience with this kind of stuff on the policy. And I wondered if we could set up a meeting, like to really go over, like what do we do? What do we want the policy to say, so that we can come up with something in between the two extremes?
We certainly can. I mean, I think the other piece of it is prior to any 504 or IEP meeting, a parent does have to get their procedural rights, which they do prior to that meeting. So I think in some ways, the redundancy of the policy is they're going to get a copy of their procedural rights prior to one of those meetings. So it does become a little bit redundant. And I think that's why we see what the NHSBA is recommending here, because it is going to occur prior to the meeting anyway. I think what Ms. Lampier and Ms. Johnson are both referring to is that if anyone's doing their homework prior to the meeting via the policy, there's a little blurb and that sends them on another chase to find the New Hampshire Educational Procedural Safeguards, because they're not easily listed there.
Well, I know that you get them before every IEP meeting and stuff, but it's a legal document, and it's difficult to read. It's difficult to understand. It's confusing. And even I, reading through it today with no emotional attachment to it or anything, was like, well, how does this work? And what is that? And I just think it would be, it would be great if our school's district could take the initiative to have something written up. I mean, I don't know if it's possible, because it is a legal document, but if we could have something that maybe takes parents through the steps in a more simple way.
So if I, I can certainly set up a meeting with Mr., I think a lot of it refers to Mr. Alexander and then Mr. Choba, maybe with some of the 504 issues, to see if, and again, I guess I'm going, I would start with referencing what we previously had, to see if, is that too much? Not enough? Where are we at? Or, you know, if we had that, what would the next steps be? You know, I do think that that paragraph that was added back on probably should continue to remain in there based upon what we've seen from the NHSBA, but I will follow up with those two individuals for the next meeting to see, can we come back to kind of streamline this next process again?
Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Ms. Lampier made excellent points here. And I think the biggest point it needs, the parents need to know how to start the process. Because some parents, if you have an advocate, the process is already cleared and outlined for them. But there's parents that don't have advocates, and they need the help. And I think they need to know what the proper channels are, who do they start with, how do they go to proceed with all this? And just for their information. Because let's make it a little bit easier for them to be able to get the services that they need for their child, versus them running around trying to figure out, how do I do this process? And so I think Ms. Lampier makes great ideas, has great points here.
Well, you know, too, that like, it says that you want to have the least adversarial relationship.
Right.
And when you start off by making it impossible for people to understand, that already starts you off as an adversary.
Right. And we don't want families walking into their first experience with advocating for their child feeling frustrated already. And I think that is, you know, when you read something and you're just like, this is Greek, I have no idea. It starts you off on that wrong foot, so.
Exactly. Like, first impression when you go, I hate to say doctor's office, but that's what they usually say. If the person at that front desk is rude and nasty, they could be the best doctor in the world, and you already have that first impression. And we're trying so hard to change the perception that some people might have with this district. And we want to make things easier and to flow better with everything that we're doing here. So this is the first step in trying to streamline the process for our students with disabilities.
Yep.
Thank you.
So I'm going to say, let's, I don't think we need a motion on this yet, because it's not ready. Say, let's keep it in our queue, and we'll ask Mr. Poska to reach out to Mr. Alexander and to Ms. Lampier, and see if we can connect the two of you to work on it. I don't know that we'll be able to do all of that by the next meeting, but I'm not taking it out of the queue. I have it written down for upcoming meetings, so that we can continue to touch base on it and see where we're at. Do we think that there is a danger or a negative consequence of leaving it as is? Because right now, what we've got on the website is the, all that stuff that we crossed out, that's still what's on the website. We haven't updated the website.
I think it might be an issue, just because it is, this, the impartial due process hearing is the end of the line.
Okay.
And if people are reading that, and they say, oh, this is what I have to do to start it, and they're actually doing the last step, it's gonna, they're going to come to the school district and be like, well, this is what I want. And it makes the school district and the parents adversaries.
Would it be better to switch it to that, you kind of bland one paragraph, go look it up on the Department of Ed website thing for now, and then work on the other thing, work on expanding it?
I think it might be, but I'd be interested to hear what Ms. Johnson thinks.
Well, thank you. I was just going over the first several paragraphs to see if it should just stop within five school days of receiving the request for an impartial due process hearing under 504, maybe. I don't know. I don't know, because I'm kind of looking at this paragraph, and it all kind of ties into that impartial due process hearing. And I'm just concerned with the safeguard handbook, nonetheless, you put part of that handbook up on the site with this, to cover it for right now.
Right. Well, we can't, we can't embed like a hyperlink, but at the bottom, it tells you under legal references right where to go.
Thank you. That's kind of where I was, I mean, to the point that you're trying to make, at least. I don't think our current policy has legal reference to the procedural safeguard handbook. So at the very least, adding that in, because that seems to be redlined right now, should be added in. We can continue to have those discussions, but I think at least that shows there are legal references where we're getting this, and the people can refer back to that, whereas I think prior to that, it was really just kind of, whatever was written, if you're not sure, call central office and they'll direct you, is really what they were saying.
So based on that, I'm kind of inclined to make a motion to approve the changes tonight, and I'm going to say, direct administration to work with Ms. Lampier on updating the policy further.
Yeah, that, I would agree with that. That's, I would second that motion. I just, I'm not sure if, I mean, is it allowed to change a policy and then go back and change it again, like a couple months later?
Yeah. Sometimes we change it, and then we realize that we missed something, or the law changes and we weren't expecting it. It happens all the time.
Okay. I was, did you?
Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Okay, I was going to say, make a motion to accept the updated paragraph, pending additional information. So this way, everybody knows that more information to follow.
I mean, that, it depends, because if I speak to the school district, they might say, well, we can't put it in plain text because of legal repercussions or whatever. So I wouldn't want to put that and then not be able to make the changes.
And I think maybe legal should be brought into this, asking them questions if need be.
Yeah. All right. So I think I'll say, the motion is to, we can say, accept, accept the updated policy ACE, and direct the school district administration to work with, do you want me to say Ms. Lampier, or do you want me to say a policy committee designee?
I'd love to do it.
Okay. Work with Ms. Lampier. On updating the policy further with plain text, or just further?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So I'm going to read it one more time, poor Tara when she listens to this. All right. The motion is to accept updates to policy ACE, and to direct the Nashua administration to work with Ms. Lampier on updating the policy further. And this way, we have something now, and then we also have a plan for continuing to improve it, but we're not leaving a policy that's not working out there.
Okay. Okay. So do you want me to second it?
Yeah.
Okay. I second the motion.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
There's just two of us, so.
Aye.
It is what it is. Okay. So we have a plan on that one. And we will bring updates back to, and I'm saying we, I'm not going to, Ms. Lampier will bring an update back to us. Yay.
I'll follow with Ms. Lampier, and we'll have some discussions about what those next steps are going to be.
Okay, great. So the next policy is GCCBC, which is Family and Medical Leave Act. This policy was reviewed by our Director of HR, and she has some updates to comply with some law, legal changes since the last time we looked at this policy. I'm just going to direct your attention to right in the paragraph entitled Employee Eligibility, in the second paragraph, the federal government has changed the number of hours that you have to have worked. Is that the only, I think that's the only one, and legal reference.
And then the legal reference of RSA 189:73.
Okay. So I'll make the motion, and then we can talk about it if we want. So I move to approve GCCBC as amended.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Mr. Castellano, I'm turning this way, and I'm not doing it to ignore you, so if I don't see you and you want to say something, just like, talk in, jump in at any time. I don't want to disclude anyone. Okay. The next policy is IKE, which is Grade Promotion, Retention, and Acceleration of Students. I'll make the motion, and then we'll talk about it. So I move that we approve IKE with the tiny legal reference update.
I second it.
Discussion.
Ms. Raymond, if I could jump in upon, with IKE and IKE dash R, I think it becomes kind of duplicative with these, both of these policies. So in working with this, I think there's an opportunity to combine IKE and IKE dash R into one policy. And one of the recommendations that I think we could make, based upon where we're going with IKE dash R, where we're removing some of the specific high school references, and just including that for all schools. So this could be combined into one policy.
That's it.
Or at least we start a discussion regarding that opportunity.
Okay. So I will draw my motion. Should have just started talking and then motioned. Trying to do things differently, it's not working out. I like that, actually. And I like the idea of taking, is IKE R a required policy?
No.
No? Okay. Then I would suggest we get rid of that last line of IKE that says Administration of Policy IKE and Procedures IKER shall be the responsibility of the building principals, because we'll no longer have IKE R. And then immediately thereafter, copy, we'll cut everything from IKE dash R and put it right there at the end of that one. Is that what you were thinking?
That is the recommendation. So again, the, take the two updated policies and just combine them all under IKE, but they're redlined in each of those policies, which I note would remain as redlined for elimination.
Okay. Further discussion before I say anything else?
It makes sense to me.
Okay. So strike through the last line of IKE, and then IKE dash R in totality. Starting at the end of IKE. Okay. So my motion is that we strike through the last line of IKE, and then we put the entirety of IKE R, starting at that point, in the policy IKE.
I second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So I'm going to move that we, at that point, rescind IKE R.
Second.
Ms. Johnson, thoughts? No? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I know, there's so much pressure when it's just two voices. All right. Moving right along. Welcome, Ms. Jengres.
Hi.
So the next policy is JJJA, which is Student Co-Curricular Activity Eligibility and Academic Expectations. And our athletic director, Ms. Jengres, is here to tell us all about it, because there's quite a bit of work you've done on this.
There's a lot of changes. Thank you for letting me come to speak to this policy this evening. As you can see from the edits in front of you, there is a lot of red and a lot of crossouts. Basically, especially in the high school section, the policy has almost been completely rewritten. So the first change you will notice is changing the phrase extracurricular to co-curricular. You've heard me talk about that for years, that we feel very strongly that our co-curricular activities are exactly that. They work in collaboration with what goes on in the classrooms during the school day. And for many of our students, it is the thing that gets them to come to school, in many cases, be it an athletic program or any of the other co-curricular activities. So that's the first change that you will see throughout the entire policy JJJA, as well as the procedures in the dash R. So talking specifically about the high school policy, just to give you a little background, the NHIAA, that's the governing body for athletics in the state of New Hampshire. So their policy, under a block schedule like we have, a four-by-four strict, four-by-four non-alternating schedule like we have, a student must pass 50% of their classes or more to be eligible. So that's something to keep in the back of your mind as we go through this. The old policy, the one that is still on the books for now and for the rest of this school year, is that a student, at any point in time on any one of their quarter report cards, can have no more than one non-passing grade. They must also have an overall C-minus average between the three or four classes that they are taking. Students, either at the beginning of a season or during a season, were declared eligible or not eligible. Before a season started, if a student was declared not eligible, they could apply for an academic waiver for participation, and they were allowed one waiver throughout their four-year high school career. If they were declared not eligible in a season, season over. At that point, they were immediately removed from a team. So what we are proposing, and by we, I did meet with the high school principals for this part, as well as the middle school principals for the middle school section, is to eliminate the waiver process. You're either going to be participating or not without the process of the waiver. Also, remove the overall C-minus average. Instead of having only the two categories of eligible and not eligible, we are proposing eligible. If you have one or fewer non-passing grade, you are eligible, you are good to go, no conditions. If you violate that 50% rule that I just mentioned from the NHIAA, so you are not passing 50% of your classes, you are not eligible. And to be honest, unless there's anything extenuating, like a severe extenuating illness or something along those lines, the NHIAA rarely grants waivers to that. So we have never petitioned for the state for anything above that. So eligible, not eligible. Anyone in the middle would automatically be put on weekly monitor reports, which is a process we do now for any student who is approved for a waiver. So pretty much what we're doing is, we're eliminating the waiver process, but we're allowing all of those students that were in that middle group that would apply for waivers, that were often approved waivers, put on monitor reports, we're just automatically putting them on those monitor reports. And the reason for that is, we feel very strongly that on these monitor reports, all their teachers have to sign it, and one other adult in the building that isn't their coach or one of their teachers. So what we're doing is, we're getting all the teachers, some other adult, could be their assistant principal, their school counselor, their Monday E block teacher, could just be a random adult they know in the building, as well as their coaches in the athletic office circling around these students to help them progress through the year. We've learned with most of our students who are put on academic waivers and put onto these monitor reports, they do much better in their classes, they earn their credits, and they maintain that level their appropriate year of graduation and graduate from high school on time. We have also seen that some of the students who are not approved for waivers for a variety of different reasons end up declining a little bit. So that's sort of where we're at, not eligible, eligible, and everybody in the middle, we're going to circle around you and make sure you're successful, and we're going to give you the opportunity to participate. And it could be in sports, it could be for the play, it could be for any of the other number of co-curricular activities we have at the high school level. The reason for eliminating the C-minus average has a lot to do with competencies. And I'm going to put Dante on the spot for a second. A lot of students, would you agree, from one day to the next, your grade could change?
Yeah, for sure.
Absolutely. So what we're seeing is, students are getting grades, and grades don't stop and start over in the high school with competencies, much like traditional grades from when we were all in school. So grades at report card time are like taking a picture. That's what the grade was on that day that grades closed and got posted on a report card. But between the time they got posted and the report card being published, a student might have recovered a test, a student might have turned in some missing work, there might have been a lot of things. So with competencies, our grades are more rolling grades, that they're constantly changing until the course is over. And then at that point, that's what the grade stands. So that's, that's sort of the reason for eliminating that C-minus average. The C-minus average was also in place when Ds were a regular occurrence in students' grades. So way back when, a long time ago, when we used to have the seven-period day, we didn't want a student participating if they had seven Ds. So with block scheduling, with competencies, it's a much different grading atmosphere right now. So that's, that's what we're proposing with the high school. So again, eliminating the C-minus, it would still be no more than one passing grade, excuse me, no more than one non-passing grade would declare you eligible. If you violate- If you violate the 50%, you're not eligible. Everybody in the middle, if you end up making a team, you would automatically be put on weekly monitor reports. So I'll stop there before we talk about the middle school.
Thank you.
Questions?
I do have some questions. And so this is for all co-curricular activities, including our, you know, student activities, our clubs, our, you know, band and, you know, choral activities and drama.
Band and chorus are a little different.
Oh, because they're a class.
Because they're also a class during the day.
Okay.
Yep, but so this would be for any co-curricular activity. The policy does state, and this is something that has always been in the policy, that this would stand, I don't remember exactly where it is, but this would be for any student participating in an activity that has a contracted paid advisor.
Got it.
So that's the difference. And I apologize, off the top of my head, I don't know exactly where it is. Yes, right underneath where it says Academic Expectations High School, eligibility determination for the start of a season, that should actually say season slash activity.
Yep.
To be eligible, yada, 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 student participating in an activity with a contract advisor.
All right, so I'm just going to make a note for Ms. Kinsella, that where it says season, it should say season slash activity.
Yes, and that would be throughout, in case I missed any other portions there.
I'm sure she can do like a search and find.
Yep.
And then my other question was, I love the idea of having like this wraparound of support for students. What about home support? Are we also involving parents and guardians in this, like, weekly check-in?
We have. A lot of times what happens is we do notify the parents when students are turning in the monitor reports. Because what happens now is, we have the monitor reports due every Friday, and I can speak for what goes on in the athletic office, reports are due every Friday. The first time a student's report is not so positive, we give them kind of a break. We have that conversation with them that, look, you're not doing so well in your English class, your attendance isn't great in this class, you got in a little bit of trouble in the hallway. We have that conversation with them, and we let them know that if this isn't improved next week, you will be put on a pause for the season. So that second week, when a student comes in, and that English grade hasn't gotten better, and they're still skipping that other class, and they're getting in trouble in the hallway, we put them on pause for a week. So that first week where we've sort of given them their warning, we do notify the parents as well. The parents and the coaches at that point are notified, so-and-so, just so you know, wasn't great this week, next week, if it doesn't improve, they will kind of have a timeout. So that usually motivates the kids, because they don't want to miss whatever's going on the following week.
All right. Ms. Johnson? Oh, Ms. Laimper, did you have a question too?
No, we don't.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. In paragraph one, two, three, the word written in front of copy was stricken?
Yes.
Okay, how are you going to inform the parents? A copy of these additional requirements will be provided to both. What are you going to provide them if it's not written? How is it going to be provided to them?
So I guess the difference there, and we had some conversation about that, it is in writing, just a lot of these policies, we don't distribute handbooks and policies. A lot of times, they're emailed home, or they're posted on websites or things like that. So I guess they're still a written document, it's just not, you know, I'm not going to hand a parent a copy of the policy.
Okay.
So I can say that for, so today's the first day of sports in the high schools. And so last week, I got an email home with like a 12-page packet of things that needed to be printed, and some of it needed to be signed, and some stuff we had to sign up for a sports texty thing for communication with the coach and all that stuff. So it was all, and there's something Ben had to do too, that it was emailed home for me to, you know, review.
Should we add that, that a copy of the additional requirements and rules should be provided via email?
Electronically?
Electronically, yeah.
I'm hesitant to specify how it will be, because some coaches might email it, other coaches might put it in their Sports U app, other coaches might print it and hand it. So I don't want the policy to be so specific that this is the way it will be distributed to you versus you will get a copy. That's my only concern.
Yeah, see, my concern is when I read this, I'm going to get a copy. My question would be, if I had a student in school, where am I going to get the copy from? How am I going to receive it? So that's what my concern would be. If anybody reads the policy, a copy of the additional requirements or rules and requirements shall be provided to student participants and to students, parents, or guardians. None of these rules or requirements shall be contradicted or supersede board policy. So that's what my, where is it going to be? How would I get it?
If we added after parents and guardians, if we added either electronically or in a hard copy.
That's fine.
That way, it provides the option for either.
Yep.
Does that work?
Works for me.
I think that's good.
Mr. Castellano, how did you get your packet this year? You just said you do spring.
Yes, so I do track. I don't recall getting any packet, I was just looking at an email from the coach that I got like about individual, like, or not individual, but specifically for track, like the expectations, but I'm not sure if my mom got any sort of packet or anything, or maybe since I've been enrolled in sports, it's different, I'm not sure.
What we're talking about is exactly that email that you received. Yep, just the, you know, so there's the, like, the student-athlete-parent handbook, but then the coaches give you that additional information that tells you to be a varsity athlete, this is what it means for our program. So it's that extra stuff that's specific to each program.
Okay, so I have written down that in paragraph three, at the end of sentence three, we're going to add either written or electronically.
Yep.
Yep, okay. Any other questions on the high school section?
I just wanted to comment that I think it's a great idea to get rid of the waiver. I think that that's the kind of thing that some kids would get and some kids wouldn't, and it wasn't really fair, probably. You know, depends on maybe health from their parents or something like that. So I really like, I really like the updates to the policy.
Great, thank you. And I also want to, there are details in the policy about, all right, this is what happens at the start of a season, but in the middle of the season, when report cards come out again, a student could stay eligible, a student could then become on those monitor reports, a student could still be dismissed from the team if their grades declined so poorly. But we did decide as a group that if a student starts the season on monitor reports, regardless of how good their grades are mid-season, they would continue on monitor reports for the duration of the season or activity. That obviously it was working. As long as they maintained that 50% passing, they would stay on the monitor reports. And a student who is not eligible at the beginning cannot gain eligibility mid-season. Once practices and tryouts start, if you're not eligible, you're not eligible.
Oh, sorry. It's okay. Just curious, what happens when we have those students that switch from one high school to the other? So every now and then, and I guess it's not really that, every now and then, a few kids every year will switch from south to north or north to south. In my experience, it's been rather willy-nilly, it's not been right at the beginning or the end of a season. Do they just lose the ability to play, or do they stay with their old team?
Well, if you are not attending one school, you cannot play sports for them. You have to be, well, you have to live in the district of the school. They have to attend the school or live in the district. So homeschooled students, students who attend charter schools, they can participate in our athletics. So it depends on why a student's moving from one school to the other. If they are moving because their family upped and moved out of the South District into the North District, a full-family move immediately declares them eligible to participate. So they would be eligible to have a tryout or join that team if it's a non-cut sport.
Got it.
But if they move just for another reason, something's going on in the school, and they ask for a variance or something like that, they would not be eligible to participate.
No, I was thinking like a relocation.
Yep, full-family move, they're immediately eligible.
Okay, great.
And that would be the case if a kid moved here from Concord.
Right, right. That's really what I was thinking, although I think it's pretty common in Nashville to have people, you know, leases are up when they're up.
It's pretty common for kids to move in from all over the place.
Hey, we're the place to be.
Absolutely.
Any other questions on high school? Mr. Castellano, any questions or thoughts on it?
No, not any really, not really any questions, but I think it's a good idea to just allow students the chance to like improve their academic eligibility, and it definitely seems like that can be a motivator, just like having that report or whatever, so.
Exactly.
Sounds good.
Exactly. And just to be clear, any changes we make to this policy, we probably need to put this in here someplace, it's not effective until the fall. So the current policy is going to take us through the end of this school year. So this new would, it was important to come before you now, because we start registration for next year in June, so we need to update all of our documents if this were to get passed.
Right, so either the very beginning or the very end of the policy should say this takes effect as of...
August 1st, even if we do August 1st, or something like that. Thank you.
Yep. It says it now at the end of page two. I don't know if you want to move it somewhere else to...
Well, that, I think, references specifically the waiver process, that effective of the fall, there would be no more waivers, but it doesn't really reference the rest of the policy.
Right. So yeah, I definitely think we need a line that says, this policy takes effect August 1st, 2023, or is that when the official fall season starts? I know some teams are like getting together in July.
For next year, it actually, it'll begin August 11th, so we could use that as the effective date. That would be fine.
Okay. Just want to make sure, I know some of the teams start working out like on a drop-in basis.
Optional summer workouts.
Yeah. All right, so middle school's a little different.
Yes. So middle school, beginning of a season, we always felt very strongly that our middle school, middle school kids go through a lot of changes, have a variety of reasons for what's going on in their lives and things like that. So we have always had the policy that incoming, for the start of any new middle school year, everybody was academically eligible, eligible for athletics, eligible for any co-curriculars. So the beginning of the year, that hasn't changed. So what happens is, for those of you who have been around a while, we originally had in this policy that the team accountability and team probation process that was going on in middle schools at the time were part of this academic policy. Those programs no longer exist in our middle schools, so we came in, I believe in 2019 when we revised it, and we took that out. We didn't have anything good to replace it with while kids are in season or in activity. So that's the biggest changes here. So we did put in that during a season or during an activity, students, there would be mandatory monitoring times. So you can see during a season for our student athletes, these timelines, the last Friday school day in September, December, and May, actually, that's an era that should be April. I apologize. Sorry, Tara, spring season, last Friday in May, in April, not May.
In the middle school one.
In the middle school, sorry. So those line up very nicely with the start and ends of our season, and where report cards come out and things like that. Similar benchmarks would be set up for other co-curriculars. They run at different times, you know, when's the drama club doing their play? So they would also do something that set up that, you know, this is the midway point, we're also going to pull grades. We had talked about, and we had drafted a lot of different things on how that's going to happen and what's going to happen and all of this stuff, and the three middle school principals felt it would be handled differently in each building. So some, they're going to put it on the team teachers that are going to pull the kids' monitor reports and report to us if there's a problem. In another school, they're going to use their school counselors to report those. In the third school, the principal felt they wanted to be the one to pull all the athletes, monitor reports, look at their grades, and determine, you know, who's doing okay to continue and who needs a little bit of a pause. So that's why there isn't any real specific anything in here on how those grades are going to be monitored. And then there's some information here about what happens. So if they have more than one F, they have 10 days to bring that F up. If they do it, great. If they don't, it's much like at the high school, middle of a season, report card, your season's over. So that's the biggest change for the middle school, is going back and having something in the season. We just felt that the 60-day trimester is just too long without having any check-in. So much like we did with the high school, providing those weekly progress reports, kids being checked up on, that's what we're providing here.
Okay. Questions or comments on the middle school changes?
I just want to commend Ms. Gingras and her team. You know, obviously, there's still some discussion about this, but this was, you know, one of the reasons why Ms. Gingras wanted to be here tonight was because there were so many changes that she felt the need to explain, but it's more in tune to how we're conducting business on a regular basis, so it really does align with what we do on a regular basis at both the high school and middle school level. So we're talking apples to apples to what goes on here as opposed to kind of making it fit from how the policy had been. So a lot of work that had been done to make this more aligned with our daily business. So thank you.
I really like how we are now integrating the academic support for kids with the understanding that their co-curricular activities are an integral part of their school experience. I mean, for a lot of kids, they come to school for their athletics or their drama club or whatever, and they kind of learn the other stuff while they're here, but that's not their passion. And so if we can help them be successful at the stuff that isn't their passion while also enjoying that, I think that just makes for better human beings.
Right.
So I'm thinking that it would be really great if we had all of that for the whole board to hear as well. So we should talk about that as well, because I do not feel qualified to explain all of that to the whole board in a way that I can answer their questions.
Right.
So between now and when this goes to the full board, maybe we could chat about your availability, and I can chat with Ms. Bishop and Dr. Andre about scheduling the agenda such that it fits with what's going on with your schedule as well.
Thank you, I appreciate that. The only other thing about this is JJJR. I know they're too different, but they're kind of connected.
Okay.
Basically, JJJR, the changes are changing the word extra to co, extracurricular to co-curricular, and then pretty much everything gets deleted.
Right.
Except the appeal to the Director of Student Services.
Okay.
That's the only part that stays. So even if a student, either in the middle school or the high school, is declared ineligible, you cannot participate, there's still the appeal process.
Oh, okay. So we're keeping the appeal, which is good.
Right. So there's no waiver, but they can still appeal the decision to the Director of Student Services.
Okay, and what are we calling it now? Did we change the name? Appeal form, perfect.
Yep.
Okay, so one other edit on these, the page numbers on JJJA are not correct, so we just need to go in there and update them. They say like, we're on page four of three.
Yeah, and I think that will change also once all this deleted stuff is taken out.
Like the formatting, yeah.
Yeah, because when I, when I printed a version without all the red, JJJA is only three pages.
Okay, perfect. And I know that Ms. Kinsella is updating it for ADA compliance, so you'll see, we're getting rid of those boxes and stuff, so I just wanted to mention it in case that's something you have to like physically go in and do something with, I don't know.
Yep.
All right, so I'm going to move that we approve JJJA with the edits that we discussed tonight, and there were five of them. I'm not going to relist them, but I have written them here on the paper for Ms. Kinsella, and we all, you know, caught her attention by saying her name on the tape every single time.
Great, Tara.
So, okay, so I move that we approve it with those edits.
A second. J-A. Hold on, I got to write that down. Any further discussion on it? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Excellent.
And I'm going to move that we approve JJJ dash, no, JJJA dash R as amended. A second.
Okay.
Any conversation on that? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and that passes. Woo, thank you so much.
Thank you, and just, again, just let me know when that, when you want me at the board.
Thank you, Lisa.
Yeah, I'll let you work that out. I don't make the agenda for the full board, so. I don't make the agenda for the full board, so. I no longer have to do that, it's fantastic. Okay. So now we are up to policy BDEA. So I mentioned at our last board meeting, sending, I forget the letters now, the policies regarding curriculum committee to curriculum and finance to finance, and we had done HR to HR. So now we're sending BDEA to policy. Didn't make any changes to this because I figured we could open with a conversation and then edit at will. So does anyone have any thoughts or concerns with the way it is now?
Ms. Raymond, if I could just jump in. One of the things that, when we were preparing this with Ms. Consella, a lot of BG, so in the packet included a lot of BG in there because that references policy as well. So I included, as we got into this, knowing there was going to be a discussion, and it might be something that turns into homework in the sense that we included some PG policies in there to say, should they all be under BDEA? Because they referenced the policy in the policy committee. I didn't want to leave, I think we thought we felt since we were working on this, policy should be aware of all of them. So we included all of them in one place so they could be easily referenced. I did not anticipate probably making a motion or moving on this there, but I did want to say, you know, that was what, you know, is what Ms. Raymond said is we kind of pushed some of the policies back to the committees that they work on. This is the policy that we should be working on, so we included some other information to make an informed decision about where we want to go.
I certainly wasn't anticipating doing all the work and completing it here tonight. I mean, it's, if everybody wants to dive in and whatnot, I'm 100% here for that. If we want to wait until we have Christina and Neil and do kind of more of a work session at our next meeting, I'm okay with that, too. Just a note on that. Mr. Poska and I were approached by the Student Senate at North and our other board rep, Mr. Farley. They are working on policy, oh.
JCLF.
Thank you, JCLF, which is regarding snacks and beverages and foods in the school. JCLF, which happens to coincide with some changes to grant funding language that we need to make in that policy anyways. So we met with them last month, and we're going to meet with them again next week or the week after because they have, they would like to start selling coffee in the T-Stop. And so they have some recommended changes to policy JCLF to update it. They've done all this research on how it interacts with federal laws and state laws. And so we will need time next month to hand over part of our policy meeting to the Student Senate and to Mr. Farley to explain the work that they've done and why they're asking for the changes they're asking for on that policy. So that's going to that.
And simultaneously, working with Dahlia Dale for some updates about, working with some updates on this policy for a wellness grant. So there are kind of two separate entities that are looking at JCLF, both for their needs. And I think, you know, Ms. Raymond and I were fortunate to meet with Mr. Farley and another member of the Student Senate from North to discuss their ideas. They're going to come back and meet with us next week. And, and we've asked them to be able to be present at the April policy meeting to discuss what they're recommending, what they would like to see in order to implement a grab-and-go coffee type of event through the T-store at North as part of the DECA program. So I think it's going to be a very interesting presentation.
Yeah. So perhaps we should think about making next time focusing on that policy as well as this BDEA more as a work session. So focusing on what the Student Senate wants and then BDEA, and then if something else comes up from admin. Does anyone have thoughts or objections to that?
It sounds good to me.
Okay. I just wanted to update us that there is one, no. One or two other things. I got a request to consider a policy that would let us offer gym credits for students participating in sports, like rec league sports or whatever. And I've been doing a lot of research, and I can't find, I was told that Hudson had the policy. And then I think Ms. Darling thought that Conval had the policy, and neither one of them has a policy that says that. So I've been in touch with the School Boards Association, and we talked a little bit about like the Learn Everywhere credits might be something to think about. But I can't find any kind of like samples of people who have done that. So if anybody has any knowledge of that that they're willing to bring to me, I would really appreciate it. I'm hesitant to craft a policy based on one individual in the community reaching out to me without having anything else to reference. So, so there's that. And I think that was the only other thing I have in my queue. Anyone else? Ms. Johnson?
Yes, at our last full board meeting, when we got the contract that came before us again.
Yes.
Without the costing items. And it, Ms. Oden and myself both said, and I made a note of it with everything that went on, I remember this, approving contracts need a costing sheet before we take it up at the full board.
Yeah, well, I wonder where, is that, would that, I wonder where that, what that would go under?
Because it seems like I keep asking for that, and Ms. Oden did. And Mr. Marku, I'm not going to put words in his mouth, but, I mean, if he gets his rank and file to vote on a contract, and we don't have the information when it comes to the board, it's not fair to the rank and file to vote on something. And we're not really ready to vote on it. And we're sending it back for the next board meeting. And that was one of the reasons I couldn't support the secretary's contract because we just got the costing sheet that night. And it's a lot, like I said, to digest because it is a spreadsheet of information. So when you say that no one's getting a raise, but you're getting a step increase, there is a raise there because of the step increases. So you can't say zero. And if they're getting a 4%, and let's, this is hypothetical, and they're getting, let's say, a 4.8% on a step increase, it's not just a 4% increase. So we need people to understand that.
Yep, and I think your point was well-taken at the last meeting. And based on the vote, I would say it was well-taken that.
I was surprised.
But, well, I mean, we were elected to safeguard taxpayers' money, right? So, I mean, amongst other things, but that's part of the job. And so I think that without knowing the cost for things, it's very difficult to vote. And certainly, we want to support people. And the last thing I want is for the unions to approve a contract and then have to wait for us.
Exactly.
Because that's frustrating, and that doesn't help with our employees being happy and satisfied in their jobs.
And I agree with Mr. Marku. I know that's hard to believe sometimes, but I agree with him. You know, it's like anything, when he's right, he's right. And if I'm wrong, I'm wrong. And if the board is right, or he's whatever, you know, I respect him for that. And I don't think it was fair, again. And I know the circumstances this time. Why wouldn't get the information? But the time before, we did not have, we got it that night. And it's just a lot. And I wasn't going to sit here holding up the board and trying to read it and get the information.
Yep, so I'm glad you brought it up because I had, I had forgotten.
I have my little sticky note.
Yep, the, so I was trying to figure out where that would go in policy. Like, if we have a policy that talks about, you know, approving union contracts, and we don't really. We have policy DA, which is Fiscal Resources Management, that was last approved last year, about one year ago exactly, in March of 2022. And that says that we have to, that the district seeks to achieve the following fiscal goals. And one of the goals is to provide timely and appropriate information to the board and all staff with fiscal management responsibilities, which might apply, sort of. So I think this is a follow-up I'll have to do with Mr. Donovan because he knows the fiscal management policy is like the back of his hand.
And that was my, should this be something from, through the Finance Committee to update that policy?
I don't know.
I think we just, first, I think to Ms. Johnson's point, we need to figure out where it should fit in for the next steps. But I think it might fit in Finance first because that's where it would rarely originate, wouldn't it?
Yeah, I mean, the only other, well, typically, it depends on the policy. But typically, policy's been handling it, and Mr. Donovan will advise the Policy Committee. The other policy that I pulled up regarding this is DHA, which is Contracts/Signing Authority. But that one's really talking about contracts and purchase orders for 10,000 or more have to be approved by Finance before they go to the full board. So I don't, neither one of those makes me feel like that's the most appropriate place.
Does the School Board Association have any policies around signing union contracts?
I don't know, I can ask them.
It might just have to be a whole new policy.
Yeah.
And it might have to go under like Personnel because that's what you're approving contracts for Personnel.
Right. See what Personnel says. So between now and next time, I'm going to ask everybody to take a look at those B policies that were included in the, in your packets so that we can see what, if anything, we want to incorporate into our Policy Committee policy. Because we want the Policy Committee, just like we wanted HR and fiscal, it needs to be working for the district in a way that makes sense. And we may be like, hey, we're great, we don't need any changes. But we might find some stuff in there that seems like a good idea, too. I'm just going to take two seconds and read. Yeah. I don't see anything. Because it's not really hiring, it's not, you know. So I can reach out to Bara Christina and Will Phillips. Phillips, Phelps, Phillips.
Excellent. Phillips, excellent.
No, the attorney at the School Board Association. I can't remember his last name off the top of my head. Okay.